Call to me, daughter. Call to roll, please.
Mr. Burley, Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFattan? Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
And Mrs. Walker.
Quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roars on these things. Next, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with your inquiries, concerns, compliments, or whatever it is. We ask that you come to the mic, state your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes to make your comments or statements. Also, be mindful that you may not receive a response to your inquiry here tonight. The floor is now open for citizens' comments.
Thank you for giving me a moment of your time. My name is Charlotte Oaks. I'm the Director of Dining for Mount Clemens School District. I'm here as a part of Chart Wells to give you guys a thousand dollar check. Hopefully, it's for a scholarship. We would like for it to be used for someone in hospitality or doing classes in hospitality.
Well, we much we appreciate it and we will accept it gracefully on behalf of a deserving student.
Yes, absolutely. It's great.
That's wonderful.
I got you. Thank you very much. Next check, come on right on. We welcome them all.
And we do appreciate Chart Wells and Charlotte Oaks and her staff. They really do care about our kids and we appreciate the support that you guys give our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell Ms. Carolyn we said hello.
Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February 20th meeting, I think that was the date?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21st and the minutes of the Board Workshop of March 7th.
It's moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the minutes of the February 21st regular meeting of the Board and the minutes from the March 7th work session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call to roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Monk to approve the bills for payment, second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call to roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next is the re-adopt, the commitment and the district mission statement. If you recall, maybe back in...
January.
Yeah, January, at one of our work sessions, it was brought up to us about if the mission still fit what our charge was as a community school district. And at that time, it was the consensus of the Board that we felt that the mission statement was still applicable and still relevant. So, tonight, we are bringing, it's been put back on the agenda, to recommit and re-adopt the district's mission statement. And the district mission statement reads as follows. Mission of the Mount Clemens Community Schools District, Mount Clemens Community Schools is to teach all students so that they achieve beyond expectations and meet the challenges of a diverse and rapidly changing world. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding the re-adoption of the district's mission statement.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Voorhees. Mr. Voorhees, did you have a question?
No.
Are there any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Yeah, even though the motion was, the mission was initially adopted back in 1991, the word, when I look at those words and digest those words and analyze those words and what they really mean, I still feel that that mission statement is still relevant and that's still what our mission is here, is to teach all students above and beyond their expectations to meet the challenges of a diverse and rapidly changing world. And that's what we're in, a diverse and rapidly changing world. That's language from '91, but it's still applicable in 2018. Any other discussion, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call to roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next are informational items. First reading, Policy 8340. This is going to be a revised policy regarding letters of recommendation and the current, the revised language. And Mr. Monk, have you dealt with this yet?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, take it over.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Yes, this is a revise. We had brought this in for the second reading, but we had sent it back to committee to divers it and look at it a little bit further so we make sure we have the correct language. And this policy deals with recommendations coming from any members of the Board, which would be a total consensus instead of an individual in the use of the district's letterhead. So, going forward, this policy would address that and anything pertaining to that as far as letters of recommendations from any person who sits on the Board. So, but this will be, and because we had to send it back to committee, we bring it back now for the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Are there any questions regarding the first reading? If you do have any questions or comments regarding it, you can get that information to Mr. Monk prior to the next policy committee meeting and before it's brought back to the Board for the second reading and adoption. Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Thank you.
Next informational item, item nine, the February 2018 financial reports. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on the financial reports?
We did, the committee did meet last week and we discussed each of the items in the financial statements and they were accepted and acknowledged at that time as presented. And are there any questions concerning any of those?
Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, I know with the harsh winter that we've had and we've had a harsh winter, probably the first one in probably four or five years. We've been lightly, so, I mean, how are things looking as you look forward towards the end of the year with all the snow removal and sod and this, you know, how are we looking?
I'll have a much better picture at the end of, next week, I'll be looking at all of them, all of the line items. But we have been able to reduce some of our expenditures there, even though we did have quite a bit of snow removal that we had to take care of. But the good thing is, we didn't have to salt every time we had to do the snow. So, that was somewhat of a blessing that we didn't, because the salt is the largest cost in that. So, when we didn't have to salt on the weekends, we didn't. So, we were very conservative, but still making sure we took care of safety at the same time. So, at the next finance meeting, I can give you a much better picture. So, we're hopeful, even though we did have quite a few pipe breaks and, you know, water spills and all of that. So, but we'll be taking all of that into consideration the next few days.
Well, thank God we're not on the East Coast.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
They got another nor'easter coming through. New York's gonna get 12 inches, so.
Yes.
So, thank God for that. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Davis, I just have one question. I am somewhat concerned about the RFPs. And I'm going to, I'm going to kind of relate this back to Earl. I don't recall us ever having the RFPs come to us first.
No.
I find that to be a little redundant.
And with the RFPs, we're just requesting information. We're not contracting with anyone. We're just gathering information. And once we get the information, then we bring it to you for a recommendation for a contract. And even before that, we have legal look over to make sure that I didn't miss anything before I even bring it to you. So, contracts are vetted with our legal team before it ever gets to you. But with the request for proposals, we are just requesting information from different vendors based on our needs. So, that's the only thing our request for proposal is.
Yeah, just to, I've sat on this board for 33 years and we've never viewed the RFPs prior to them going out. That's a day-to-day operational task.
Right.
And it's not the role of this Board to dictate and determine what RFPs go out and go out goals and how they go out and what's in the wording. Our role is to, when recommendations are brought to us, at that time, we question, you know, the validity of the bid process, of the tabulation, and anything from the recommendation that is brought forward from the vetting of those RFPs through the various channels, including legal.
Absolutely. We're at the, kind of the end process, not at the beginning process.
Yes.
I just find this to be a little redundant.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, so.
Yeah, that was also brought to, to a policy, to look at it for, as far as formulating or, you know, I looked at the policy and yes, you are correct. You know, we're governance, we're not managers. So, we got to stay, make sure we stay on that side and not jump into the management. That's what the superintendent does and she brings whatever recommendation to us. So, we felt that, you know, it would not be, you know, in the interest of us to even look at it from, as far as a policy standpoint. And you're right, you know, that's a management issue and that's what we have our superintendent in place for and her team. And she brings recommendations to us and, you know, we look at it then, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the February financial reports? Next, the open purchase order listing. Any questions on the open purchase order listings? Any questions on the contract listings?
We didn't have any new ones from February, so, well, it would have been from March, not March, January. So, everything is the same from the past 30 days, so no update. We should have a few at the end of the year, though.
Okay. And just for the record, you know, I wish Mr. Bruley was here, but for the record, it was a good thing that, you know, with him being the vocal on this, as far as, you know, this is great that we have this, now that we can look at contracts that come up on a timely basis. And that's what we're supposed to do. You know, and that kind of, you know, we talked about it, that kind of went back to that RFP thing, like, well, we see a contract comes up, so. And before, we wasn't seeing that, so now we see it on a regular basis, which is great.
Any additional questions, comments? Next, recognition to Jack and Jill of America, the North Oakland-McComb Chapter. Mrs. Davis?
Thank you. The Jack and Jill Organization for, Chapter of North Oakland and McComb, I have been very active with our young ladies here at the high school. They've made a commitment back in September that they will come out and more or less coach our young ladies and mentor them, and they have been here religiously. And each time, they bring even more ladies to come in and work with our young girls. And on average, we have about 15 young ladies that do participate within this program. So, we just wanted to make sure that we recognize them, to let them know that we do appreciate them coming out, taking their own personal time, coming out to mentor our young ladies. And so, this certificate of appreciation says, "It is hereby awarded to Jack and Jill, North Oakland-McComb Chapter, recognizing our deep appreciation for your leadership and exemplary dedication as valued members of serving Mount Clemens Community School District, 2017-2018 school year," with the Board President and my signature on it, and given on this day. So, this would be presented to that organization and framed. So, just wanted to make sure we said thank you to them. It's been huge working with our young ladies.
And what days are they here and how much time do they spend while they're here?
They're usually here on a, I believe it's a Thursday, and they come every other week. And they're usually here about two hours and they meet in this room.
Pass on our thanks to those ladies for volunteering to help our students. Thank you very much. Item 13, superintendent's comments.
Okay, thank you. We've had a very busy month thus far and from February. Just want to recognize to Elret King, they had a very successful Dr. Seuss Thursday night. It was about 150 students and parents that attended. And we just want to say thank you to all of our parents and students that participated in that and the King staff for the great success that they had the other night with that. So, we're very proud of those folks. Okay, over at Seminole, they had a great turnout for the Read Across America Day. They had two state representatives, a Channel Seven, I'm sorry, Channel Six news reporter, many members of the Optimist Club, parents, and two of our board members also took time out of their day to come over and read to the students. So, and we're always encouraging folks to come out and read to our students because they really do enjoy that time. And I think maybe the adults get more out of it than the students do, having that opportunity to go over and read to all of our kids. That we currently have 11 students enrolled for kindergarten and our great kindergarten roundup, and that was last week because it had to be rescheduled. So, we're very thankful for the parents that did sign up already. And once the parents register their students, the students will get a backpack with full materials included. So, we're proud of all of our partners that donate those backpacks to our students. So, we're very pleased with that, so thank you. And during our April 26th art show, Seminole will also be having a basket raffle fundraiser. And they have 14 themed baskets. Their viewing and sales will start the week after Easter through April 26th. So, the tickets are $1 each or 12 for 10. And they're raffling off at the art show with an ice cream social, so we're hoping everyone will come out for that, so that should be fun. All righty, okay. And one more appreciation that the district received from the city, it is the bicentennial celebrating the 200 years in Mount Clemens. And they have given us a certificate of appreciation with appreciation for each and every unique and wonderful bicentennial birthday card created by the students of Mount Clemens Community Schools. So, a number of our students did make birthday cards and present it to the city. And it says, "Your artwork helped to decorate our kickoff reception and were enjoyed by more than 200 guests. They look so good. We have a rotating set of cards on display in the McComb County Administration Building in downtown Mount Clemens. Thank you for your help in celebrating McComb County's 200th year." And then this is the certificate that they gave. And so, we will have this on display for everyone. And, let me see, I think that might be it. Yep, and I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next, committee reports, business committee. Ms. Walker is not here. Is there anything you would like to report out, Ms. Escalante?
No, we met and we found everything to be in order and it was a good meeting.
What time did this begin and what time did it end?
I just know I was there. That's as much as I can help you.
We started at 9:35 and ended at 10:55.
Thank you, Teresa.
That is for a doctor.
Right, exactly. Any questions, Ms. Escalante, representing the business committee?
Christina, I noticed that on the item number seven, they talked about the cable commission. Patrick, did they have any discussion with you on this?
Yes, it was, a member had asked if it was possible for maybe a senior or a couple of seniors be appointed to the commission to give them, I guess, a start or something or get them accustomed to public service. And after looking into that, I found out that individuals must fill out an application and then their name is put into, into the, I guess, the list of people that want to serve on that committee. And it goes from there, so it's not that we can appoint. And I think that...
Right, because that's a partnership between the city and the school district. And the city has so many seats and the school district has so many seats and that's the agreement. So, I don't, unless legal counsel has a way where we can arbitrarily appoint people to the Board, I'm not sure if we can do that.
Cable Commission is a city function through the charter, the cable television charter. So, the Board, the district has three representative members, the school, the city has three representative members. There's one that's at-large, that's appointed by the other six members. Their primary task is to oversee the financing budget of the cable station, our operations and the programs that we do. So, if that's something you would entrust to a high school student, that would be completely on you. I know they do have to be 18 years old, after you resign for at least two years. There's requirements to hold on a commission on a city level. So, but anybody that is interested, we do need memberships for, to be on our Board. We do not have a full commission at this point. So, if they're interested, we could take them to City Hall, they go to the Clerk's Office, file an application, and then they'll be turned back over to you for whoever you wish to vote on at that point.
Just offhand, Patrick, who sits on the commission now? Who represents, tell me who represents the city and then who represents the school district?
Right now, there are two city representatives, well, I'm trying to think. Judy Armstrong, who represents the city, she's our chairperson. Raymond White, who's also a city appointee, and Mike Chitell is actually a city appointee. So, right now, we have no school appointee. They've all, the last two have moved out of the district within the year and the third member passed away a year ago.
Okay.
And then our at-large just moved out of district as well. So, we're down to three members. We haven't, we don't even have a quorum right now.
Okay. Well, the last person we appointed was to the library board.
Nancy, yeah. You have approved, within the last two years, you put somebody on my commission.
Yes.
And that person has missed, unfortunately. And the other two that were appointed by the school have moved out of district. They're...
So, currently, right now, the Board has three appoint...
And they're all city appointees, quote-unquote. They're the ones that the city commission has approved. Judy Armstrong, Raymond White, and Mike Chitell.
So, we have three that we could have...
Correct, you need three. But then those six will appoint a seventh.
Got you, got you. So, there are three vacant seats.
Correct. To oversee our operation, our budget.
The school boards are current.
Correct.
Got you, correct.
So, hopefully, I've answered your questions.
Yes, you have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
So, there are three seats that the Board needs to appoint that are open.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on Wednesday, March 14th, at 9:00 a.m. And attendance was myself, Ms. Escalante, Mr. Voorhees, Ms. Davis, and Ms. Metz. Did I, did I?
Metz.
Metz, see, I butchered that. I was, I should have just stuck with Joy. I'm so safe with Joy, you know what I'm saying?
That's what we do.
There I go.
And we had Joy at that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Charged it to my heart, not my mind, you know, so. We took a look at Policy 8340 and a letter of reference, which we brought tonight for first reading. We also discussed and almost finalized, but not yet, the Policy 1240 for evaluation of the superintendent, which we have to adopt based on the new guidelines by the state that we're going to start using. We also took a look at, of course, we took a look at the RFP recommendation, but we decided that, again, you know, we're governors, that's management, so we discussed that. And then we also sat down, you know, when we had our training with MASB for the evaluation, one thing that stuck out to me when he said is that, you know, school districts should review, all its policies should be reviewed every three years. So, what we decided and everybody agreed, it'll be a tall task for us, but I don't think so. But we're going to try by the end of this year to look at every single policy in the district. And we'll, you know, if it's, if it's just something that not's going, that don't need any change, of course, we have policies that come from a legal aspect that we have to adopt on a regular basis. But just going through, because I kind of took a look at it over the weekend, we got some policies in there that hasn't been looked at for 10 years. So, we're, our committee is going to go through and we're going to do it all by bullet points. So, we'll do 1,000s and we'll do the 2,000s and we'll do the 3,000s and we'll do the 4,000s. And hopefully, by the end of the year, we can get everything looked at. And if there's nothing that needs to be changed, we'll just date mark it as revised, so it's up to date. And we decided that we're going to meet on every second Wednesday at 9:00. So, that'd be our day of meeting for the month. If anybody have anything that they need to, for us to talk about, look at, by all means, email me. And then we adjourn at 10:46. It was kind of a lengthy meeting, but we had fun. Told a lot of jokes, told some lies, too, but we had some fun. And then we set everything up for our next meeting. And so, we're going to go back to and finalize the superintendent evaluation, then we'll bring that to the next Board meeting for the first reading. And those are my notes.
Any questions for the Chair? Any questions for the chair? Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Thank you.
Community Coalition, Mr. Lennanberry.
Yes, we had a very full meeting last time, it was nice, our coalition's getting larger, which is what we've been looking for, for quite some time. We are preparing for Real Talk, which will be happening next month, you'll be looking for invitations soon. Uh, just today, the students were asked to reaffirm the topic rooms they wanted to join, so they got their sheets during third hour today, filled out the ones at, you know, one, two, and three, turn those in, so we have our list finalized, and then we'll be putting that all together. We're meeting next week in this room, or the, I'm sorry, the College and Career Room, at three o'clock to finalize all of our plans for Real Talk, that will be happening in April, and then we're still working on Career Fair for May, which will be in the gym, we're looking for, again, if you don't know anybody, that would be a good, uh, person, entrepreneur, or somebody, you know, that you think, who'd talk to the kids about what they do, get them excited about a career. We're looking at people who want a job shadow, we want to get the kids onto a job shadow, get them out of the building, following a professional for a day, getting out, seeing what the real world is like. You know, that, that's what, that's kind of the direction we really want to get, is getting these kids into a job shadow situation, so they can get out and realize there's more than just this building. And there's the real world out there, there's real money out there, there's fun to be, or whatever, so that's kind of the focus that we're going for with that. And on my city liaison, I'm gonna liaise for a moment, uh, as Superintendent Davis said, is the two-hundredth anniversary of the county, the city and Clinton Township all turn two-hundred this year. The city, uh, the county turned two-hundred on Jan- January fifteenth. The city was just, uh, Sunday, May eleventh, I'm not sure about Clinton Township. Uh, we did have a nice production at the Emerald Theater, I hope you got your invitations. Uh, we were able to honor our logo contest winners, Angel Delitch and Christopher Cole. We had some essay contest winners from Seminole that were up there as well, that were honored at the presentation, it was a nice, it was a very nice event, we had a packed house. Um, if you get a chance, go to City Hall, every month, there's gonna be a different historical display. Uh, January was the city itself and the Mineral Bass, last month was the school district, so if you get a chance, go over there, we had a really cool layout, all the good stuff in there. Uh, this month, it's the Rose Gardens and the, uh, Rose Industries, so every month, a different group will come in and put a historical display at City Hall. So it's a really good chance to go down, print, you know, and just walk around, look at the school stuff. Uh, I just want to bring that out there, 'cause it's a really neat thing, people working really hard and bringing their stuff from home and putting out really nice displays for our city's two-hundredth anniversary. We do have events throughout the year, so I'll keep you up to date on when those are. I think the next one, we're having a historical church tour on May the fifth, I believe, I'll get back to you on the date, I believe it's May the fifth. There are six or seven churches that you can tour in town that are over a hundred and fifty years old, so, I think there's some, nice stuff planned throughout the year to celebrate our bicentennial, so if there's any questions I can answer.
Patrick, what, uh, you said that your, your showcase event is when in May?
The Career Fair?
Yeah, Career Fair?
Yeah.
May what?
I believe it's the eleventh on Facebook.
May eleventh?
I believe it's May eleventh, I mean, if you go on Facebook and like the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families, you can update on everything.
Okay.
Because we do make events for all those things that run, you know, routinely through your news feeds.
I will make a commitment, uh, to you right now, I will, uh, Jay Golf will come in and, and, and do a table, and I will actually bring one of my embroidery, embroidery machines in, and we'll kind of show the students how to, how to embroider.
I would love that, that would be great.
I think that's a craft that's out there that's, um, um, it's getting bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a, it's a specialty, but, but it definitely has its niche out there.
So I can claim you as one of my five?
I am one.
All right.
Yes.
We all have to bring five, so I just got one of my five.
Yeah, all right.
That's how we network, people.
That's right.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Mr. Lennanberry?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lennanberry. Legislative, yes, they had a meeting, I had a basketball game, I opted for the basketball game. That's my report. Any questions of the chair?
How was the basketball game?
We won.
There you go. Well, that was a good stint there.
And plus, if there was anything really, really, really earth-shattering, the superintendent would report it out, because, see, the superintendents have a legislative workshop also.
There you go.
That's my out.
And right now, the only thing that they've really been, um, honing in on is, um, school safety because of the shooting in Florida. So we've been taking, uh, part in various, uh, meetings concerning how the county and each school district, uh, will move forward with that.
Thank you. Curriculum personnel.
We did not have a meeting. Uh, we talked about it, um, uh, superintendent and I, there was no changes, so there was no updates, so there was nothing new to talk about, nothing new to discuss, so instead of wasting time, we, um, pulled the plug and said, "No meeting." So next month, we have a meeting if something comes up. Did I lose anything, Madam Superintendent?
You're right on point.
Okay.
Do you like that pull the plug?
We made an adjustment. How about that?
Very good.
Since you're talking, continue on.
I will continue. Athletics. Uh, athletics, you know, there's a few things we need to talk about athletics, but we'll bring it up later on. We did not have a meeting. Uh, we're looking to have a meeting, uh, but, uh, the topic's at hand, we didn't have any, um, resources for, or backlash, so, and that kind of piggytail with personnel. So we made another adjustment, and we didn't have a meeting.
Thank you, sir. Educational Foundation Commitment, I have not been notified of a meeting, but I'm pretty sure we will start having those meetings pretty soon to start, uh, figuring out the, um, local scholarships, uh, because that's still one of the big projects of, of that committee, is to provide the, uh, local scholarships to all of our graduating seniors. Uh, so just a heads up, after any graduating seniors, there's gonna be a one-page application, basically, you just have to put, put your name on there right correctly, and you, you're eligible to get the money, so just a heads up. When we say, "Go fill 'em out," it's a one-pager.
President Earl, the, the, the honors convocation that we have, our program, is, is first class. And you, and you're right, we need, there's a lot of scholarships that, that we issue, and hopefully, the students will apply for them. Take the effort and do that. I mean, that money is just sitting there, so it just needs to be applied. By the, speaking of that, what are the dates for graduation? Ms. Davis?
I'm sorry.
That's all right, I, I'm sorry, I woke you up.
Yeah, I was reading.
The, um, graduation date?
You know, I will have to get that, 'cause I'm not sure.
And also, if you can get me the date of the honors convocation.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Board comments. We will start ladies first, Ms. Escalante.
Thank you. Um, happy spring. I don't like spring forward. My kids are having a rough time with the adjustment, so I wish we could pass to just keep fall back as our time, but, I mean, who am I, so? Um, last week was a busy week. Um, there were lots of field trips that went on over at Seminole, so I just wanted to thank the teachers for making the effort to organize those and get the kids out of the building. Um, I went and saw a play at the Macomb Performing Arts Center with my first grader, Go Dog Go, it was really cute for Reading Month, Dr. Seuss, and I think some went to the Science Center, and I think there was a trip to the DIA a couple of weeks before that with the fifth graders that went excellent too, so. Um, big shout out to all the teachers over at Seminole for organizing that, and, um, I was at the reading night at King, it was so fun. Yeah, they did a great job with that too, so lots of fun activities been going on for the kids. Um, thank you to Sharla for the scholarship, that was a really nice surprise to come in with that for our kids, that's gonna be a blessing for somebody, so, looking forward to seeing who actually gets that. And with that, Glenn? Once a bay there, always a bay there.
Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, would like to thank the Jack and Jill organization, um, for their, um, commitment and participating in, um, supporting our district. Um, this bicentennial, um, you know, I was looking on here, you know, I, I don't know what y'all, y'all think, but we have some talented kids as far as artwork. I'm looking in this right side picture, and, you know, these, uh, this takes me back to my days, because when I, I, I kinda did, I had woodshop when I was little, so I made this, and my dad, uh, and I'll keep it short, Earl. My dad was, 'cause he was, you see how he looked at me? There you go. Um, my dad was a CB'er, so he had this big, we had this big CB in town, our house. Um, and, but when he turns it on, it knocked out all the radios and everything for about two blocks. So I, I, I kinda dealt with the FCC real early in my life, so, but he had me do this, this map of the United States, and I did it all in different wood.
Oh, wow.
And these maps in this picture kinda took me back to my childhood, 'cause I'm looking at these maps, and, I mean, we have some, not only our pictures, our new signs in front of us, I mean, we have some talented, talented kids. Um, and I think I might have to, uh, hold off on Arizona, stick around and probably hire some of these kids when they get out of high school, so they're gonna be some graphic artists, definitely.
Yeah.
Um, so we want to say thank you to all our, uh, students for their participation in the bicentennial. Um, thank you to, um, the county for, for the certificate. Uh, wanna definitely thank the parents, um, you know, I wanna thank the staff, Stacy and her staff over at King. Um, we don't hear about King a lot, sometimes, you know, no news is good news, but I know they do a wonderful job over there, 'cause that's where we house most of our special need kids, our Pol High program, um, you know, but they do a great job. It's, you know, a, all the other schools do a great job, but I know, I just kinda wanna, you know, give a shout out to Stacy and her staff over there, and it sound like, you know, they had a lot going on over there this past week, so. Um, you know, definitely want to thank our community partners, um, you know, we're a community school, and that's what community partners do, they support the community school right here. Um, and with that said, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Voorhees?
Um, I would like to, uh, first of all, I, this, the people who watch this program, I think, are very interested in the school district, and therefore, um, we're gonna have an election coming up. Uh, I know I, unfortunately, I didn't bring the sheet with me, I believe the date is sometime in July that you have to file. Um, please consider that. Uh, as you know, I'm, I'm not seeking reelection, but, um, we, we are still very concerned about our school district, and, and if you, if you're watching this program, I believe you have the interest in it, and I think you should certainly try to make the effort to run. The other is, is Patrick's, uh, uh, Cable Commission, I, you know, I'm sorry, Patrick, that we're running a little short on our end, but, uh, hopefully, if somebody is interested in that, I, you know, once again, this program is on that cable network. Uh, if you enjoy it, step forward, we'll put you on the committee. And I think Patrick needs that to, to have a quorum there, so. And with that said, Christina stole my line, however...
Stole the, stole the...
Once a bay there, always a bay there.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Dr. McFadden?
I just had to double-check that, you know, right? Sure, uh, well, anyway, my comments, first thing is, um, our community partners, I want to thank all my community partners, um, our, our community partners. But I know there's some concerns about the school district and the community. You know, a lot of people probably don't like the way the school district is ran, or what's going on in the school district, and I ask those people, if they're here watching, to, um, bring insight to the school district. I mean, take it to the superintendent, bring it to the board, uh, let us know what your concerns are, but I'm gonna ask this question also. Anybody can bring a problem, but if you can bring a solution, that helps out even more. So just don't pop up and say, "I hate this, this, and this," and, uh, we will listen, um, I, I promise you that. Uh, we are trying to make the school district better, we're trying to make it a partner with the community. We're not trying to be alienated, we're not trying to run it down to the ground, we're trying to bring it back up. And I bring that up, 'cause I, I heard some comments in the last few weeks, last couple of days, about, you know, they don't like the way the school district is ran, and who's on the board, and how they work on the board, and things like that. So I'm putting out there, I'm stretching our arms forward, as a part of this board, and part of this community, step forward and just, um, give us your concerns. You know, if we don't know what your concerns are, we can't fix them, we don't know what the problem is, and a solution to the problem is not gonna happen. And those are my direct comments, and those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I must apologize to Dr. McFadden from last month, because somehow I overlooked him in the board comments, and I told him I wouldn't do it today.
Yeah, that's true. That's why I had to double-check him, you know? Make sure he called my name.
But I think Mr. Voorhees threw me off when he, when he, when he said, "I'm gonna be Doc, like Dr. McFadden, I'm gonna be short." That threw me off.
And I was very short that night.
You were really short. Uh, I would like to thank, um, Chartwell and through their representative, Ms. Sharla Oakes, for the generous, um, gift of a thousand dollars, uh, for a scholarship for, uh, deserving student. Again, those one, that's free money out there, that's, that's out there for the taking, if you just put the effort in to apply for it. Kudos and thanks to, um, Jack and Jill. It, I've heard about Jack and Jill all my life, uh, I was never a Jack and Jill student, but it's, it's good to see that that organization is in our, in our district, and they're supporting our young students, uh, that are, that are in the Mount Clemens Community School Districts, and, uh, these are professional women. Uh, they're, they're serving as mentors and role model, uh, for our young ladies, and, uh, hopefully, our young ladies are taking full advantage of the opportunities and benefits, uh, that these women bring, uh, as they volunteer their time, uh, to work with the students here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Uh, just to piggyback there, if you want to get involved in something, there are three seats on the Cable Commission that are up, that we need to, uh, fill, uh, from the board. Uh, there should be a process, uh, where you can submit your name to somebody, uh, to be considered, and those names will be brought forward to the board, uh, be vetted out, and, um, you know, possibly appointed, uh, to serve on the Cable Commission. Uh, like, um, my colleague, Mr. Voorhees, said that this meeting is part of the programming that it's on, that's under the control of the Cable Commission, as well as the City Commission. All the programming, uh, on the, um, Mount Clemens Community, uh, School Districts, uh, network are under the control of the Cable Commission. Uh, it's one, it's one way to give back and to also, um, pro- provide some leadership, uh, to a worthy, worthy cause here in the school district and in the city. Also, to piggyback on what Mr. Voorhees said, there'll be, in November, there'll, there'll be an election for three seats on the board. Um, there are three seats that, uh, that expire in December thirty-first is the last, uh, term for those, but those three seats will be elected, uh, in the general, at the same time as the general election in November. Uh, we will continue to update you on when the deadlines, filing deadlines, uh, for you to get your petitions in, or to pay one hundred dollars, uh, for your name to appear on the ballot. Again, this is another way for you to provide service. It's a commitment, uh, it's a volunteer, uh, position, uh, but it's a labor of love, and if I didn't love the labor that I do on, that I've done on the school board, I would not have stuck around so long. So again, there are three seats, uh, that will be elected in November, it's another opportunity for, for you to serve the Community School District. I'd like to say kudos to the members of the Policy Committee for taking on the task of going from policy number one to policy number seven million and sixty-six, to review them. You might see policies out there, you can't spit on the floor, or something, I have no clue, when, when you start going back and pushing, blowing the dust off, so I, I commend the committee for, for taking on that, that, that task of overhauling, uh, the policies. Um, that's a, that's a big task, and again, I, I, kudos to my colleagues on the board for taking on that task, and, and thank you for that. Also, congratulations to all of our winter sports participants, both boys and girls. Uh, to my knowledge, every single athlete, student athlete that participated in winter sports, nobody was ever declared ineligible this season.
That's right.
And so, for that, I say kudos to our student athletes for not only participating in the athletic arena and cheerleading, but also maintaining your grade point average and being scholars first. I think this is the first time in a long time that, that I recall that none of our student athletes were ruled ineligible at any point in time through... throughout that, that season. So kudos to those student athletes. Kudos to all of our volunteers. I know we don't thank you enough. We can't pay you monetarily, but we can give you hugs, we can give you accolades when we're here at the board table, as all of my colleagues have done, because I know, we know, that there are many things that this district could not do if it's not, if it wasn't for the volunteers that give their time, energy and efforts in this school district to help our students as we, as we provide a world-class quality education free to the students who come through our school doors here through the Mount Clemens Community School District. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Babe?
Well, let's see, what else do we wanna put on the agenda?
Support.
Seconded by Dr. MacFadden. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. MacFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries, meeting adjourned at seven twenty-four in the PM.